Getting started here in about half a minute. And anybody making fun of my glasses tonight will be in automatic denial. Okay. Rusty, we ready? Okay. All right. We've still got a few seconds. Well, good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is Monday, May 14th at 6:00 PM. This meeting's called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that you turn off your electronic devices as they tend to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff. That'll be followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Ask the applicant to come forward and present their application and answer any questions from the board. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We do ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. You don't have to put your social security number and everything else on there. Just put your name and your street address, please. The first item, we've got a couple items we're going to table here. We're going to do it rather quickly, so if you just bear with us, we'll get to the actionable items. All right. First item is 2017-357. This is zoning application Z17021. This is to be tabled to the June 11th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of community. Motion to table, please. We've got a motion, Mr. Bartlett. Second, Mr. Monroe. Please vote. Technology makes us really fast. Sherry's not here. She's not here. It makes that one easy. All right. The item is tabled 6-0. All right. The next item on the agenda is 2018-225. This is zoning application Z18-009. This item's to be tabled to the June 11th Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of community development. You've got a motion to table this item, please. Ms. Lightfoot, second, Mr. Rice. Please vote. And this item is tabled 6-0. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2018-163. This is zoning application Z18-007. This item's to be tabled to the June 11th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can we get a motion to table this item, please? Motion, Mr. Monroe. Second, Mr. Bartlett. Please vote. The item is tabled 6-0. Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is 2018-160. This is zoning application Z18-0... RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of 4.08... .98 acres and land lot 488. This is 2664, 2670, and 2680 Grady Street. And Pritchard Brothers, Pritchard Builders Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Martin, the background.
Yes. If y'all remember, probably a couple years ago, Mr. Pritchard brought this rezoning request in front of y'all for 2680 Grady Street. The request was to take the one lot and split it into two and build two new homes. At that Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, the board recommended denial of the request. Mr. Pritchard tabled that request and subsequently withdrew it. He has gone back and he has purchased the next two lots up to join with 2680. So his request is to rezone 2680, 2670, and 2664 and rezone it from R15 RAD conditional. There are currently two existing houses on that property. One of the houses will be demolished and the one of the houses that will remain in that lot will be reconfigured. And then three new houses will be built on the remaining lots. I'll show that to you in the site plan and everything beforehand, but I just wanted to give you a quick history on the property and where we're at today. This acre is just, or this property is just under an acre in size. It fronts on Grady Street, on the west side of the street. The applicant is proposing to demo one of the existing houses and build three new houses in its place. The rezoning request is from R15 RAD conditional at a density of 4.08 units per acre. The city's future land use map has the area as moderate density residential, and that land use classification caps zoning at 4.5 units per acre. So the proposed development would be under that density cap. There is no land use change associated with this rezoning, and as you can see, all adjoining lots to the north, south, east, and west are all moderate density residential. Here's the proposed site plan. This is the existing house to the north that will remain. Some of the property from this lot, from the existing lot, will be used for the property below, and this will be reconfigured into a smaller lot. This is the location of the three new single-family homes. All the homes will front on Grady Street and will have individual driveways off Grady Street. Some of the homes are supposed to be front entry. Some, one of them has a front-side entry type courtyard. With this request, Mr. Pritchard is asking for a couple variances. Some of them have to do with setbacks. They're looking for a front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of five, and a rear setback of 20. With this request also, they'll have to provide stormwater management for the site. That'll be done through individual stormwater management facilities, and they'll be located in the front yards near the street, but they will be on private property. With this request, there'll be five variances. The first one to reduce the lot size from 15,000 down to approximately 9,000. The second to reduce the lot width from 100 feet down to 55. The third to reduce the front setback from 35 to 20. The fourth one is the side setback reduction from 10 feet to five. And the fifth one, the final one, is the rear setback reduction from 30 to 20 feet. Staff is supportive of the first four requests for variances. Those are very similar to other variances granted in the immediate area for infill developments. The last request to reduce the rear setback from 30 feet to 20 feet. As you can see, the site plan, there is nothing keeping this development from meeting the 30-foot setback, and there hasn't been a hardship explained to us to this point. So staff is not supportive of that request, and will reflect that it still maintain a 30-foot rear setback in our recommendation coming up. Here's the proposed home elevations. This is the type of architecture you'll see on the proposed homes. These are the three properties, the subject properties. And then just to give you some context of the homes in the immediate area. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R15 RAD conditional with the standard conditions from Section 1201 excluding conditions 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, and 17. The remaining conditions will deal with building composition, stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, burring of debris on site, streetlights, tree ordinance, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we'll have some special conditions. Number 10, as you can see, these are the listed minimum setbacks. We're reflecting a 20-foot front setback, a 5-foot side, and then a 30-foot rear setback. And as we noted, that's as not requested by the applicant. Number 11 reflects a minimum lot size of 9,400 square feet. 12 requires a minimum florary for the home of 1,800 square feet. Number 13 requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. 14 requires a 10-foot right-of-way dedication along Grady Street. 15 just requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. 16 requires that all trees that are not preserved during the land clearing process, or the land clearing phase of the development be removed at that time or be preserved in accordance to our ordinance. Number 17 ties the approval of the zoning to the site plan submitted, and 18 ties the building elevations to the site plan submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We've got any questions for Mr. Martin? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to ask Mr. Pritchard if he'd like to come forward and tell us a little bit about his plans.
Hello. My name is Steve Pritchard, and I own Pritchard Builders, Inc. I noticed that they had Pritchard Brothers up there, but it's Pritchard Builders, which is a little bit different. Frank, and I don't know what you would like to know, go into the background of myself or explain to you what we're doing, right?
Yeah. Just tell us a little bit about your plans. I think you have a reputation around here for building some pretty nice houses.
Well, thank you. 1062 Bank Street is currently built, and it is for sale. That is one of the properties that I, one of the plans that I plan on building on Grady. The very first lot would be identical, not identical, but the same footprint as 1062 Bank. The other two will be similar to 1068 Bank in size, but I will be changing some elevations to provide with possibly some different plans, but definitely the elevations will be a little bit different. I don't think I'll be doing the exact same thing. The, we will be doing a stone and brick and siding elevations. That hasn't been 100% determined, but Rusty showed you a few possible elevations that we could use. It'd be very similar to the architecture that is along Bank Street now on my side, where I'm building two at 1062 and 1068 Bank, and then Raines Builders is building across the street. He's built five houses on property that we had sold him some time ago, and he's just about to finish up the fifth one. I don't know. We also built the houses right next to those five new homes that are under construction, and also all of Parkview Village we built, my brother and I at the time. He's since retired, doesn't want to build houses anymore, but we still own property together, and we still do some developing together, but I'm the only one doing building, home building. I don't know. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pritchard? Do you have one? Go ahead, Denny.
Yes, sir.
You requested five variances. Community Development approved four. You're not going to have an issue with the setback?
The last one that they did not, no, I didn't. I looked at my site plan just now, and I'm probably 50 or 60 feet from the rear property line. Now, in dealing with the city engineer on stormwater, we had to make some accommodations to satisfy his comments, and that's the reason we tabled it. And in satisfying his comments, we had to move the houses slightly back, but still, we have plenty of room. Gives us longer driveways in the front by doing this, so they're going to be set a little bit further off the street, but we still have way over 30 feet. So I don't have any problem. I don't even know why that was there, honestly. I guess it's something my surveyor or my engineer put in. So I apologize for the confusion there.
No worries. Any other questions for Mr. Pritchard? All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to zoning application Z18-008. Let the record show, there are no comments from the public. All right. Is there any further discussion? Any more questions for the applicant or staff? In the absence of, can we get a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve zoning request Z18-008 rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for four single-family homes at a density of 4.08 units per acre, .98 acres, land lot 488 through 2664, 2670, and 26...
We've got a motion to approve, Mr. By. We've got a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Can you please vote? And your application is approved 6-0. Good luck to you, Mr. Pritchard. Okay. The next item on the agenda, and this is a plat approval with variances for two residential lots. It's .819 acre. It's land lot 527, also known as 1,300 Hayes Drive. JW Hall Custom Building is the applicant. Mr. Staub, has you given us the background on this one? Excellent.
This will be heard by the Planning Board tonight and go to Mayor Council next Monday. It's just for a replating of two single-family lots. This is the vicinity map where it's located. It's directly adjacent to five houses that were rezoned at the corner of King Springs and Hayes Drive, and then another lot that was similarly replatted, like this one, will be heard tonight. It's just a, has a single-family house on it, and then the parcel in the back is landlocked, and there's a stream there. So applicant's requesting to replat that lot to be two lots that will have frontage on Hayes. He's requesting two variances, minimum lot width to be reduced to 55 feet, and then to reduce the side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. It'll meet all the other requirements of R15 zoning, so it's not a rezoning, it's just a lot split. And consistent with previously approved lots. These are the two lots. Showing the setbacks at 35 feet, side at 5, rear at 30, and then the stream at the back of the property that makes it pretty much unusable. And this is showing the two lots in connection with the previously approved lots. Here's the proposed building elevations, and then the subject property and adjacent properties. Community Development's recommended approval with the variances requested at 1,300 Hayes Drive.
Any questions for Mr. Staub? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to have the representative from JW Hall Custom... You're becoming a regular. Good evening and welcome.
I thank y'all for being here to let me, or to hear what I'm hoping to do. But my name is Josh Hall. I've been a builder for about 14 years now. Built mainly in downtown Atlanta, but built a home not far from here on Main Street this past year, and have had the opportunity to purchase the property on Hayes Drive that's close to King Springs to build five houses on that with four facing Hayes Drive. And we just purchased the property next to that, 1272 Hayes, and we're going to put two more houses there. And we now have the opportunity to purchase the lot next to that. So kind of the idea is to create a, just a street frontage with custom homes all facing Hayes Drive. And for this final property, we're just going to, we're just going to continue that same look and feel of that whole portion of Hayes Drive. And we've already started construction on the first four houses on Hayes, and we're going to begin the next two on 1272 Hayes as well. So this, this final property is kind of a bookend to that section of Hayes Drive, and every house will be unique when it comes to the materials and the look. You know, they'll be a higher-end home when it comes to that part of Smyrna. And so that's kind of the home that I like to build is one that's unique, where it feels like they're getting something special. As you saw with the, with the watercolor drawing, those drawings were very much reflective of the homes that are going in on the first four on Hayes Drive. And we'll actually be making some more watercolors for the next four to kind of create kind of a special kind of feel for as we market each home, so each person feels like they're getting something unique.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Hall? Do you have, you said you've started on the other property, the other houses on Hayes?
Yes. Well, we've started the land development on Hayes, and I'm waiting to get the final plat recorded for 1272 to begin construction on those. Those two, I'll probably start first.
Really?
Well, just because we don't have to do quite the land development on those two that we're doing on the first lot for five, so.
All right. Very cool. Any questions? Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
All right. Guys, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this plat approval. Let the record show, there is no more comment from the public. All right. Any further discussion, questions for the staff or the applicant? All right. Then can we entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would, concerning plat approved with variances for two residential lots on .819 acres at 1,300 Hayes Drives, I make a motion to...
Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Monroe. Please vote. Your application is approved 6-0. Good luck to you, Mr. Hall. All right. The next item on our agenda. This is a plat approval with variances for two residential lots. Also .819 acre at land lot 487. This is 1114 Church Street. The applicant is PM Builders. Mr. Staub, the background, please.
Yes. This will be heard tonight by Planning Board and by Mayor and Council next Monday, 21st. This is for a lot split on Church Street, exactly the same as one that was done directly to the west, 1102 Church Street. And currently, it's got a duplex. One existing lot with a duplex. The applicant's... and then platted for two single-family detached homes. It's about .81 acres, and it's zoned R15. It'll remain R15. Applicant wants to revert back to the original plat that was platted in 1913, which had 250, well, the lots were 50 feet wide, so that's what they're reverting back to. They need two variances, one for lot width from 85 feet to roughly 49 feet, and then to reduce the minimum side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet. It'll meet all the other requirements of R15 zoning. And it's consistent with the lot split that was done on the adjacent property. Proposed site plan, just two 50-foot wide lots, almost 350 feet in depth. Going to setbacks again. This picture of the subject property and adjacent properties. Here's proposed elevations, and then we recommend approval of the lot split with those requested variances at 1114 Church Street.
Any questions for Mr. Staub? All right. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to ask the representative from PM Builders to come forward and tell us a little bit about your application. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Brad Thompson with offices at 12... This request is very similar to the one I did back in March. The only real difference between this request and that one is that this has an existing duplex on it. So what we're trying to do is to continue our efforts to keep Smyrna beautiful and build new homes where there are existing homes that are aged and they still have economic use, but we feel like what we're doing is good for the community in building homes that are a little more affordable than $600,000, $700,000 homes that you see everywhere. So at this point, really, I've had this, this is very similar to the request I had in 60 days ago, and we're going to do the same type plan. It's just going to have different elevations on it. So we will vary up the elevations between the four lots that would be created in succession.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. You don't have to raise your hand. You can just come forward one at a time. Please state your name and address for the record and sign your name and address for the sign-in sheet at the podium, please.
My name is Megan Hawkins.
Welcome, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. My husband and I live at 1124 Church Street, which is the house immediately adjacent to where Mr. Thompson is planning on doing this. I'm not here to protest what he's going to do or stand in the way of that. And actually, he was kind enough to speak with me... actually, um, he was kind enough to speak with me a couple of weeks ago, um, about some of my concerns about what he was about to do and what was involved. So if y'all don't mind, I just wanted to share with y'all a few things I, I said to him. He was very nice, and I appreciate his listening to me. I too, my husband and I too, would like to keep Smyrna beautiful. We've been here since 2001, and, um, part of Smyrna being so beautiful are these amazing trees that we have in our community, and they're just charming, and they make the most horrific house look beautiful with the wildlife and the canopies, and, um, they provide for other wildlife, which I know all of us just really enjoy. My house really isn't that spectacular, but it's actually made, we think, beautiful because of the trees that we have. They're old, they're, they're just amazing, and the property that, that he has purchased also has some beautiful, beautiful trees. And I've discussed with him that if possible, um, if, if he could keep as many of these trees as he can, just because they, again, they're so beautiful, and I don't want to keep repeating myself, but I do feel that in some of the construction that we've seen around Smyrna, it looks as if a bulldozer has just happened along and, and just torn down some, some really beautiful trees, and of course, you can't keep everything because you have to build, but it does seem as if some of the properties, there could have been a little bit more thought to some of the beauty that, that has been destroyed that does keep Smyrna beautiful, so some of the trees are very adjacent to my husband's and my property, um, and again, they're old. I'm not just talking about pine trees, and, and he stated that he would try, and he didn't promise me anything, but just as y'all, since this is what you all do, um, as we go along in Smyrna, it's so beautiful, and the growth has been, has been well done, I feel, for the most part, but if that's just something that maybe y'all could consider is, is people are continuing to buy smaller homes and the homes adjacent, and maybe they could keep in mind to do their best to leave some of these trees that have been here 100 years, and maybe they could be here 100 more years. So that's all, really, and thank you for, um-
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Yeah, appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in attendance that'd like to come forward? Okay. Do you have something? Mr. Martin? You know, it's, it's a very difficult, it's a very challenging situation anytime you're trying to develop a parcel that's got beautiful trees on it. It's a very expensive process to get rid of them. Quite often what happens is if you, you try to save too many, and I've been guilty of this a number of times, um, you end up encroaching on the critical root zone and having a problem in the future that's a lot more expensive to, to remedy. So it's very near and dear to me, the trees, um, and, and I'm sure Mr. Thompson heard you, and at the same time, he's got to make sure he's protecting his future clients and their liabilities as well, so. Mr. Thompson always does a good job in our community, um, based on my knowledge, I'm limited there, um, so I'm sure he'll, he'll make an earnest effort there. All right. Any, uh, any further comment, discussion? Mr. Bai?
Yeah, just, just one thing on- As I read it, correct? And I'm not familiar with where the trees are located on that lot, but I- ample opportunity to, to preserve quite a few of the trees. I would, I'm not an expert builder, but I would think that there's plenty of opportunity, at least in, in the rear portion of the lot. Right?
Side of the lot, as to those of us who live around it.
Right. Understood. Is there, we're gonna have a tree plan associated with this development? Is it required? Or, I mean, I'm not trying to spend your money, Mr. Thompson, but, um, I mean, like, there's a certain limit to what you're, what you can and cannot do to protect the trees.
Right, right now, the tree ordinance is if there's 50% land disturbance on the site, so due to the, the size of the lot and the, and the, and the depth of the lot, if he keeps every, if he keeps his land disturbance activities up at the front of the lot, he, he may not exceed that 50%, may not be required to have a tree plan. If that's, if you guys wanted to provide a tree plan, that's something you guys may want to stipulate as part of a recommendation.
I don't, I don't intend, if I can-
You need to come back to the microphone, Ms. Hawkins, if you want to say something else. Since you were so nice, we're gonna let you come back.
We need, we need it on record, so we can hear.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I don't plan on do, I don't feel that I need to do anything that's gonna stall or, um, have him do something else. I, I do believe that he, um, will take these things into consideration. Personally, I don't feel that I need him to do any kind of calisthenics, um, other than, you know, his, his, that he will try and do what he thinks is reasonable, and he will try, as maybe others will as well, that's-
Okay.
-moving forward. So that's just my fellow owner.
I'm sure he appreciates that. All right.
I know, I don't want to make his-
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. All right. At this time, I want to ask for a motion for approval. I've got a motion, Mr. Bai.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve, um, item 2018-228 plat approval with variances for two residential lots, .819 acres, Land Lot 487 through 1114 Church Street, PM Builders.
We got a motion to approve, Mr. Bai. Got a second, Mr. Bartlet, our most active member tonight. Please vote. We give out stars for who has the most activity up here. We're missing somebody, aren't we? Tom, Earl, Danny. I can only read so fast. Player for the dramatic, Mr. Thompson. Oh, Lord, now we got more members than we know what to do with. I got, I even voted that time. That's fantastic.
Jerry, nice vote.
I'm sorry. We're just having fun, guys. All right. Well, there was one other. Yeah, technology, it seriously makes us so much, so much quicker, better. It ain't gonna get me in trouble with other developers in the area saying that I've, I've actually cast a vote. No, we've, we've got it all, right, guys? Yeah. Okay. So the motion passes 6-0. Um, and, yeah. Thanks for working with your neighbor over there. Keep Smyrna happy, too, right? Okay. The last item on our agenda, is there any further discussion about anything? Miss Lightfoot? No? Okay. All right. The last item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 9th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Board members in possession of the minutes, are there any changes that need to be made at this time? If not, can we get a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Got a motion to approve, Denny Campo. Got, uh, second, Mr. Rice. All in favor of the minutes as presented? All right. The minutes are approved 6-0. This does conclude our, our casual attire wear. Mr. Monroe has introduced shorts to our panel now, so we're gonna, we're, it's all right, had to do that. Anyway, um, I guess that makes us adjourn at 6:39 in the PM. Thank you for coming. Sorry, David. I'm just mad I didn't wear shorts.